As you can see, Mr. Broderick is not present. He has an excused absence on vacation. Next, we look, I ask for a new example of action. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
I'd like to add Parks and Rec under mine.
Any more? Motion approved.
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Okay, next move on to the abstract, Mr. Backs.
The motion approved the regular abstract of page hundred seven hundred and eighty-five to number twenty. I recommend the payment in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars in one sum plus a closed audit of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie? Supervisor, any proof of minutes from the March twenty-fifth meeting?
The motion approved the March twenty-fifth. Regular town board meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Next item on the agenda, project concerns. Chief, anything? Mr. Jacoby?
Would you like me to go now?
Sure. Next, anyway.
I have two budget revisions for twenty nineteen. I'd like to ask for your approval. The first one is in the Sewer Department, that's like one. I'd like to request to move one thousand eight hundred dollars from the treatment and disposal contractual budget to the treatment and disposal gasoline budget. They had to purchase a large amount of diesel fuel.
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item.
The next one is moving funding from one medical insurance line to another medical insurance line. What had happened in January of twenty nineteen, we had seven employees who switched to a less expensive health insurance and is paid out with different budget. So it's merely taking the funding from the budget they were in over to the budget now where they expense it. They actually saved the town over eleven thousand dollars for these seven employees.
Second. More favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The last thing I'd like to mention is that we filed our twenty eighteen New York State A and D, which is the annual update document, on April first. It was filed by our auditors, Trasher and Malachi. There is a copy on our website as well as a hard copy in the clerk's office.
Anything else?
Okay.
All right. Mr. Train, anything? On dash now, anything?
Just gotta be again.
Okay. Dan?
Yes, the Water Department's received a grant and I would like you to purchase another pickup truck with that and the rest of it might be put towards fire agents.
Need a action tonight or just advising us?
Yeah, just asking, yeah.
One of them. Okay, thank you. Josh, you here? Bob?
No.
Tom?
There's a consent order relative to an Article seven proceeding that we're gonna ask Board to approve. It's related to the Santa Rosa case versus the Town of Lewiston and the other defendants. It's a tax issue case and the agreement has been to an assessed value of five hundred, two thousand five hundred dollars. This has been a matter that's been discussed between your attorney's office and also Linda Johnson and we're asking for the Board to approve the ability for the attorneys to sign off on that consent order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have right now.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Ben Clerk. Jacoby, is there anything else in finance that you need? That's it. Okay, next item is L. K. Realty, Mr. Seaman.
So, as the Board is likely aware, there's been a letter proposed by L. K. Realty to change the current bond structure, the amount of the bond relative to sidewalks that are going in at that development. They, the proposal essentially, I don't have the letter right in front of me, but it's essentially to lower the amount of the value of the bond to a proposed number that they had. This is something, really it's on the agenda tonight, really if the Board wants to consider that proposal. It's not something the Board can do by vote right now. It'll have to be an amendment to the contract, so there'll need to be a new, a new written amendment to the contract. And what I would suggest is that the Board consider whether or not they want us to move forward with that and if so, there's been a proposal to limit that bond to, I think, eight thousand dollars, I believe is what it was. And it was previously at a forty-four thousand dollar bond, I believe, or maybe a forty thousand dollar bond. And I would recommend that the Board speak with their engineers to just determine how much it might actually be to make sure that those sidewalks ultimately get put in, what the cost of putting those would in, if the Board is inclined to move forward with the reduction of that bond. And then if so, you'd need to reach an agreement in terms of what that would be and we can make an adjustment, a written adjustment to the contract.
So what he's saying, we, there's eight thousand dollars left in sidewalks to be completed and that's why the bond is at the eight thousand, is what I'm reading it.
From what I can tell, their current bond is either forty or forty-four. His suggestion is that it may only cost eight thousand to finish the sidewalks.
That's his estimate, though.
But that appears to be his estimate. I would, I would recommend the Board speak with their engineers about what that actual cost may be and move forward from that point.
Paul, do you have any comment on it?
I do recall seeing an email that Mr. Masarla proposed. Use the same per square foot price that we calculated to come up with a forty thousand dollar bond, just with, I think, I don't call me, about maybe three hundred feet left, using that same square footage, came up with about eight dollars. So if the Board would like, I'll just double check that, review, be able to back on that at the next Board meeting, if that's okay?
Maybe have Tim go out and check and see if that's.
Tim and I have discussed any concept and we agree that having some type of security still is good. And the eight thousand, I'm pretty certain is right, but let me just double check and then we'll have a report back at the next meeting.
Whoever requires a bond that's a little in excess of the anticipated cost?
The original forty was, and I think the same square footage probably would be, I think, would be, would put the town in a comfortable position. There won't be any less than that, I can tell you for sure. And if otherwise, it would be in his interest to finish it.
Yeah, that's, that's what my goal was, to make sure he's not at the end saying, well, it might be just cheaper to lose a bond.
It'll be, if, if, if that were to occur, then we'd have enough to put the sidewalks in.
Oh, okay, good.
We're protectable, yeah.
That's the idea, is to protect. I wouldn't expect there to be any, any reservation about putting it in, but we wanna make sure the town's protected in any event.
Any other comments on that? Okay. Any else on that matter? Tom?
Oh, no, no, there's nothing else.
Next thing is Moblet for those that are used for, Chief?
Yes, I actually was able to give another cost, which is lower, and actually puts me below the twenty-five hundred threshold for three verbal quotes. It's the same company that I presented last time to the Board, so I guess since it's under its my discretion, so what I'm looking for Board approval to, to do is, since I don't have the money in my budget, is to approve the money, the purchase for this out of H ninety-seven.
H ninety-seven.
In talking with Jackie for her public safety. With the understanding as well that we do still have equipment that has to be auctioned as well, and she's gonna try to keep track of what comes in for that, I don't know. I, I imagine that it's gonna be at least enough to cover this, but either way, that's what also is coming down the road that I agreed, that we took even into consideration for this. So what I'm looking for is an approval for two thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
What was the purpose again, Chief? Was it for the contract with the mobile app?
No real contract. They're gonna invoice us, it's a year by year, and we can stop at any time.
I just don't have that Mobile App company in front of us.
It's for the development of the Mobile App and support of the Mobile App. So it'll be that, and that's what we agreed on when we had to talk to the Board and talk to Steve about taking the money out of there and then, just so the Board understands, come budget time, I'm looking for that much to continue that if we want to at that point.
What's the name of the company?
So I would just have it included. And it's called thepoliceapp.com. So Police App, with its custom police apps.
Make a motion to approve two thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars to come out of H ninety-seven for purposes of police, thecustompoliceapp.com?
Second. More favor? What, just, Mr. Seaman, do you agree that H ninety-seven?
Well, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna, can I add one more thing? So if we could just add that.
Set it to a true approval.
If there is a contract, I don't believe there is one, but if we could, if they do present one or send one, I would make it continued upon.
I'll make that amendment.
Second. H ninety-seven is appropriate?
Yeah, it can be, it can be paid for H ninety-seven.
Yes.
This was the same app that was talked about at the March twenty-fifth meeting.
Right. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Carrie?
Thank you.
Cell tower agreement, Mr. Jacoby.
The County wants to build a radio tower on our, on Dave's property out here. And everyone thinks it's a good idea. And what the, what the tower's used for is radio communications for the police and also for our fire companies. And where we stand right now, there's several areas that are dead for radios, so as one could imagine, police and fire without a radio to call for help, call for an ambulance, call for a helicopter, anything they might need, it's imperative that they have coverage throughout the town. And it's particularly home for us because our fire companies and our police department. So to that end, Stephen Morris recused yourself?
We did. We submitted a letter to the supervisor indicating we owe a conflict of interest and we'll be recusing ourselves from any involvement in the, in the matter.
And we've, as discussed before, we've hired Gavin, McGabry, and Grim, who for everyday purposes essentially net thrown, and he's gonna work on it for us. So it's moving forward. The next thing that's gonna happen with it is going to the environmental committee, so I will attend that meeting and hopefully we can move it along so that things can be built in time of need. So all we got.
Do you know if it's gonna be going to the tower committee during the convening?
We had a sequence of events that we talked about last time. I can't honestly say what the order is.
I was gonna, typically go to the tower committee, the planning board. So you guys will need an approval to hire?
Right. I'll make that motion.
Second. All favor?
Bill, I think Davis was trying to get your attention.
Couple others. One is what tower and how it's built. There was an issue with that, did you talk to?
We talked to them and there's, there's two stuff, it's not that.
It's not the monopole.
It's not the monopole.
It's not the monopole.
And you aren't gonna have those big cables going out into your yard, would have to be fenced in. It's gotta have a minimum.
The other issue they didn't get back to us with was rents.
Who?
That's an issue they're addressing and paying with Upper Mountain Fire Company and with all the other towers.
Yeah.
I would imagine Mr. Perlin would be able to.
Well, they, when they left, when we hit our last meetings, if I might interject, that was the discussion between, gonna, it's supposed to take place between Mr. Perlin and the County Attorney, whatever. So that was a consideration, but they didn't have anything as of yet.
Cause the last two meetings I had with them, they came in, looked, seen, and they started them back to see which area of the lot they wanted. Right now, at this time, it may be placed behind Chief's building.
They seem very cooperative, they're, they're interested.
Oh, yeah, no, because we have this set up and it may benefit his building and us with that.
Well, actually, definitely will benefit this building because there's no radio coverage in this.
No, I don't mean for that. I mean for, they have a generator that they need for this radio tower.
Yes.
Their generator can also power your auxiliary building.
Ah.
Right? That's what they're doing at the fire hall.
Yeah.
So that's a good idea.
Yes. So this is why this process is gonna take a couple steps.
Our engineer heard that, right?
So now I have, I have.
Heard what?
I have a generator that's sitting there, not hooked up, so that maybe it benefits us too.
Okay.
So that was the one issue. They've never responded back to me.
So I don't, I don't know who would handle that issue.
Mr. Perlin.
Mr. Perlin could negotiate that. So you'd have to get in that information as well.
You know, the other thing they mentioned when we did speak to was the fact that there was, there was no opportunity for a co-location in any other, any other commercial cell tower.
Oh, no.
So that's one of the reasons why the location of the highway department was.
I can just tell you that right now, for me personally, I've lived in this town for most of my whole life, and I wouldn't care if it was a purple tower that went a hundred yards into the ceiling up from here, it was visible, it is something that we need so bad, it's an officer safety issue. One of my guys or girls could die because of this. We can literally not talk to each other if one is in the backyard of someone's house at certain places on Ridge Road and the other one is in the front, we can't talk any way. That's a problem.
It's a public safety problem, too.
So I, I just appreciate the Board's enthusiastic, enthusiasm to help with this because I can tell you that there's very few things that I feel is passionate about, but this is a problem. And it's a problem for us and it's something that I've been hounding them for, for over a couple of years now, so, I mean, I'm just glad that we're working with them. I think everything can go in a positive direction because whatever we have to do to make this work, it's there.
Do we need a motion, a second?
Do we need two resolutions? One to direct the supervisor to sign or can do it all at once? First, we have to approve the attorney, right? With the approval, Harry, the attorney. Yeah, authorize Steve to sign it. Right, so do we have a motion to approve the attorney? Make a motion. Second? More favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second motion is to authorize the supervisor to sign? Second. More favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's? Correct? All right. Next, resolution for the unified solar permit, Mr. Morial.
Yes. I'd like to propose to adopt a standardized solar permit process for the Town of Lewiston. And I'd like to read in the minutes, whereas the Town of Lewiston currently requires residents to obtain a building permit for the installation of solar panels pursuant to Municipal Billing Code Section three sixty-six, and whereas the Town of Lewiston Code Enforcement Officer has advised the Town Board of the Town of Lewiston that the New York State Uniform Process is consistent, compatible with the Town zoning code and permitting practices, and whereas the Town Board supports the use of solar energy as a renewable energy source. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Lewiston that Town of Lewiston hereby fully and formally adopts the New York State Unified Solar Permit Process for New York, dash sun, sun solar power in New York and establishes the permit fee at fifty dollars plus two dollars per one thousand of construction costs. Further resolve the Town Board in regular session duly convened, plus hereby authorize and direct the Town Supervisor or Town Clerk of the Town of Lewiston to execute such other additional documents that be required or to perfect the resolution herein.
Second. More favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Carrie?
I'm sorry, who's second to you?
Carol?
Yes, now I got Parks and Rec.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to declare a dump truck full of metal, like, full of metal to be accessing for permission to the Parks Department to sell this at a scrap mill yard. This metal serves no purpose in the town, was discarded after cleaning the outfall building. We need to make a motion? Are we declaring the dump truck or the excess metal? Is it both?
No, just the amount.
That's the picture, that you're seeing. Enthusiasm, just drop the body. Is this the second?
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For discussion, I should know better. Sorry. Do I correct that the revenue from that sale goes to the general fund? Yes. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next one, please declare the following vehicles access and allow the Parks Department to auction off at Auctions International, a nineteen ninety-eight Ford F-150 and a two thousand and one Chevrolet fifteen hundred. Do I need to read the VIN numbers or another record?
Second. More favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carrie? And the third, approve for employment the following Parks laborers seasonal. Read them, read the Parks employees, okay. Thomas Kennedy, thirteen fifty per hour, Austin Bauer, thirteen dollars per hour, Joel Fligo, eleven seventy-five per hour, and Donald Ellander, thirteen dollars per hour.
Second. More favor? Aye. When's the starting date?
Yeah, when is the starting date?
It's gonna vary. We're, we're gonna make it tomorrow, but these guys are gonna stagger their way in once they get out of college. And Tom, Tom is a retired gentleman, so whenever the grass starts throwing, he usually helps with mowing, mowing, mowing.
And all these fires were listed and approved in the nineteen budget. That's all I have.
We get an approval on that? Help me next time. All right, Mr. Morial, I'll say?
I'll say.
Okay, internship agreement with N-triple-C, Mr. Dagen.
With pleasure. I will move to approve the internship agreement with Niagara County Community College to move ahead with our videotaping of our Town Board minutes, hard meetings, and to work with other students as time progresses. I will not read the whole document, it'll be online. I move for approval with delight.
Second. Any discussion?
I just know that there's no address, there's no address for N-triple-C there. I imagine, do they have an, do they have an office or something that we can already contact it or?
They can fill it when we send it to them to sign it.
Very good.
I would like to thank Professor James Avanzza for all his work and his grandson for all the assistance he gave us. It's been a long, slow process, but we finally reached our goal. We do have an address on the top of the document, please.
It's for the notices.
Oh, okay.
That's, it's, it's in the center, I just wanted to say.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, thank you, Mr. Dagen. USDA property access request, Mr. Seaman.
That was, you guys may have seen, it was something that the Board had approved last year with regard to the USDA going on certain properties owned by the town to set traps for an invasive fly species that affects cherry trees. We've reviewed that documentation again and it's, it's, needs our approval in terms of any type of tort issues or anything along those lines, so if you'd like to approve it, you may.
I have a question on that. Is this something they're gonna use all these pesticides? I'm not sure. They don't give you a lot of, but all these pesticides being used, this Warrior Two with Xeon technology, the pesticide is extremely toxic to fish, aquatic organisms, organisms, and toxic to wildlife. This product is highly toxic to bees exposed to direct treatment or residual gloomy crops or weeds. Do not apply this product if the wind's gonna blow it to other crops or bees are, bees are visiting the treated area. I mean, I'm not sure if they're just gonna go in and do this. I don't know if we can even tap into some of these toxins that ain't on these.
I don't know the answer to those questions, Mr. Morial. I'd just tell you, from your lawyer's perspective, we were just asked to.
Yeah.
To review the, do a cursory review of the documentation under the understanding that it was approved last year by the Board, specifically with regard to issues about who would be responsible in the event of negligence accidents relative to the federal employees that might be on land in that regard. But in terms of the issues you've just raised, it's not something that your attorney's officers looked into in any respect.
Well, they said they found a lot of them along the river and now they're just telling you not to use it near water, but I guess they're trained in using these, you know, these, whatever it is.
Why do you buy a holder of?
I'd like to hold it. Hold it. How do you make a helpful call?
Because the document that the crop dealer holds out just says they own the property, they can set the trap, trap is notification necessary and permission to place traps. It doesn't talk about spreading as far as this document, that's missing about that.
Well, but then, though, what they say is, as prior to treatment, remove any laundry left outside to dry, close all doors and windows, move any barbecue, lawn furniture, toys. It doesn't sound like that's something contained in the trap. It sounds like something they're spreading all over the place.
I think I, I think I remember last year, didn't somebody come in and present something? It seemed they did. I think it was the same person. And if somebody came and presented something prior to them doing this last year.
There were the, I think there were the yellow traps were placed all around, along the parkway, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, they came in and told, and told the Board exactly what they were doing and they were able to ask questions.
And I think with any pesticide, it has the possibility of spreading with the wind, as we were talking about the flies that could land on it and maybe carry it away. I think just by its nature, it's a toxic substance, so I think they probably listen to their own attorneys, they're giving all the warning that they were necessary, so.
Well, do you want to make a call?
Yeah, sure, love to. Cause I don't see why they would attach all these other pesticides in there to not use them.
Yeah.
So that makes me believe they're gonna be using all these and they said that it's near the river. So I don't know how close to the river they're talking about or what, and for the bees itself, we gotta find that bees dying out as it is, but.
Farming community.
Yeah, we're a farming community, we're exactly.
So we'll say, Carrie, it's for one group of farmers and we'll, we'll kill the pollination for another group of farmers, literally.
Yeah. All right, I will make that call.
And John, when you go to the environmental on Tuesday, you can always bring this up.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'll bring this, yeah.
And I'll make the call, wow.
Good.
All right, that's, that's all, I think.
No action.
We need to tail it formally or just take?
Take the action. All right, I did miss one item on the agenda, the re-establishment of the Town Hall Renovation Committee, Mr. Dagen.
We've talked about this at budget time, we've talked about it at various meetings, and I'd like to propose the Town Hall Renovation Committee, be, consist of Town Board members to Town Clerk, Don Parry-Finkel, Town Engineer, Bob Landon, Fire Inspector, Pat Martin, and Building Inspector, Tim the Masters, and I would like to be one of the Board members. Is there somebody else who would like to volunteer? Do all of you have?
Supervisor?
Deputy Supervisor, but that's fine.
We could, we could all attend, even though we're not.
If it's a public meeting, we can all attend if there's, if there's more than.
Two, oh, I see.
Well, we're.
That'll count.
All right. Oh, yeah, you don't mean that sentence, right?
Right. Are you making that motion?
Donna looked it up and it said two Town Board members and let's proceed with it with the Deputy Supervisor and if we have to revisit it, we can. So I would make the motion for myself and for Bill Parry.
Two bills.
So it should, the resolution should say that it's an ad hoc committee that serves at the pleasure of the Board with no additional compensation?
Correct.
Is there a second? Second. All favor?
Aye.
Brett has one more. Mike, did you have something you wanna make?
Yeah, real quick, just for the Board's information, Mr. Dagen just came in. He's got, he lives on the corner of Curtis Court and Raymond Drive. He's had some damage to his property during the tree removal on the side of his house from Angry Beaver. He has been in contact with Angry Beaver. He just wanted, he's gonna present you guys with a letter and some damage stuff, just in case it doesn't work out. In the past, with Mr. Broderick and I, Angry Beaver hasn't come to a satisfactory resolution with a resident, we've basically said that we've given them withhold payment. So Mr. Dagen will give you the, the damage estimates and that stuff. Again, he's working with Angry Beaver right now, just wants to keep that on file with us. we've basically said that we're gonna withhold payment. So, uh, Mr. Daggett will give you the, the damage estimates and that stuff. Again, he's working with Angry Beaver right now, just wants to keep it on file with us.
You said it all.
And Angry Beaver's insured also, right?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, he said he didn't wanna run it through his insurance, that he wanted to, uh, cut a check for it, but, uh, I just wanna make sure that it's follow through, you know? Here's almost a thousand dollars worth of damage. The tree poked, uh, two holes in the roof and damaged a twenty-four section foot of gutter.
I'm sorry for your inconvenience, hopefully we get it resolved in a timely fashion.
Thank you, sir.
Again, generally on our final review before we would issue any payment for that, that would be part of, if this isn't resolved, we're just not gonna issue those checks, okay?
All right. Um, just taking the rip of front park off. No report. All right. And coming to the floor, um, Mike, is there anyone else?
I'm, I'm the only name on there.
Wanna just step up the mic?
Well, I can, I can yell. A question on the, uh, the police radio tower. We can't co-locate it with another tower. Would anybody have an interest in co-locating with our tower?
We talked about that a little bit and, uh, there, there are several reasons not to put, uh, cell equipment on it.
Okay.
We, we, a big part of it, we lose some control over, the county, we lose some control over their own tower.
Yep.
And, uh, that foot in the door, you know, this year it's one horizon. We're gonna put one thing on, the next thing you know, it kept some antiscarcine and it's, it's root narrow here to building.
Okay, understood. And then the other point I had, I drive past this every day, it's a sweet little building that has a sign in front of it from seven AM to nine PM. And right beside it, it says private property, no trespassing. Nobody has a clue with whatever money we put into that nice little toilet there at the end of Pletcher Road. Are we gonna put a sign up at some point?
The supervisor, I discussed this just recently because we're waiting for it preserved, but we may have to move ahead on our own in some way.
Just nail up one of those universal.
Greenway put money involved, involved with that, and they have to approve it. That's the other problem.
Also, that's not open till May first.
Not open till May first.
May first is when we're gonna open it. There's no heat in the, in the building for water lines, so usually May first is the shooting date for all the parks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just in the background, uh, with regards to this tower, is it gonna be at the highway ground?
Yeah.
Okay. What was the purpose of putting the tower up in Upper Mountain? Wasn't that for coverage for fire and police?
It's, doesn't affect anything below because of the, the skirtment, so.
So basically.
It might have been their purpose, but they're, they're, that's a county engineered program that they got to, to far as the placement of the towers.
Yeah.
So there's gaps in it and I think that they've addressed them, kind of tried to address them one at a time. When the system went in, it didn't cover.
That's, that was the bill of goods, chief. That, that, that tower was gonna go in there and it was gonna be, cover all kinds of things.
Which one?
The one on Upper Mountain, it was supposed to have long ranging, uh, range for the firemen who.
And it, it did improve things as far as the, as far as I know, as far as the purpose that it had. The problem is without that one below the ridge, because of the ridge, the way the ridge works, it wouldn't matter. There's nothing that you could put up there because there's a shadow that that casts, a radio type shadow.
And that's basically what people.
So you would have to put it to, to accomplish what you're talking about, it almost had to be.
And basically, chief, if you go back and look, in fact, we've got it on tape, that if you go back and look at that meeting, that's one of the things that the residents were saying.
I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, that's one of the things the residents were saying, they're saying.